All right, everybody, and welcome to another episode of Knowledge is Power. Power Live, and we are live tonight. Uh oh, I messed up on my phone here. I'm trying to get things straight up. There we go. All right. Tonight, we've got a special guest. Let me get this down here. All right, tonight, we have a special guest. She is running for a Beaumont Independent School District, School Board Trustee, District Three. And if you may see on the screen, it's Triva Popford Johnson. Hello, Triva.
Hello, hello, hello. How are you doing?
I'm great, love, great, love.
I'm glad to be here today.
All right, well, let me get this, uh, get, oh, show. I'm gonna DM our music down slowly and get going here with us.
Okay.
All right, we're here with Triva Johnson, who's running for District Three in the Beaumont Independent School District, uh, School Board Trustee and District Three. Let me get that straight. She's an advocate for students supporting educators and strengthening the community, which we really need in our community. So I wanted to strengthen our community. I am so glad to have you here with us tonight. And, uh, and I hope that we can just push on and push up and get the right information that we need from you. And, and I'm gonna ask you a few, but while we're here, Triva, I'm gonna bring you up on stage here, let you introduce yourself to us.
Okay, well, hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Triva His Poet Johnson. Um, I am a local poet, local, well, I don't, national poet, because I've gone abroad and I've won competitions in other states. Um, I've spoken on international stages via Zoom and other platforms. Um, I've had poetry, people perform to my poetry in the Philippines, you know. It's been a very interesting journey being this poet, and it's taken me into a lot of classrooms and a lot of churches. I'm also a mother, I'm a grandmother, and I have a heart for children. Um, I just wanna see children be their best selves and have their best chance. Um, I've just been a person who has always been able to uplift and edify and help children, you know, get set on the right path, or just to help them feel special, or, you know, that someone really cares. And so I wanna take that to the schools, because I feel like the aspect of children gets sometimes lost when so many grown folks, you know, have so much business to discuss. I think that the focus on the children gets lost. And so I wanna bring the focus back to the children. And as my campaign says, uh, let's rebuild the village. So, um, I am running for B I S D Trustee, District Three. That is the avenues like South End, part of South Park, even a little bit of the North End and Old Town as well. So I'm number one on the ballot. And so, um, I look forward to just being here tonight and taking my professionalism, because I have a background in operations, network management, and advocacy. And so I wanna bring all those great gifts together and serve our children of our city.
Wonderful, wonderful. Hey, let me ask you something. What made you decide that? You know, I know you said that you ran for, run for Board of, have you ever ran for office before? Are you just?
No way, Tony, no way.
Come on, wait.
Not even in school have I run for office, because I'm more of a person that I'm just gonna do the work. I've never been concerned with titles, but in this aspect, you can be more effective with, uh, when you have a certain, when you're in the room. I'll say it that way. And this position puts me in the room to be able to have a real voice for those children and for the educators, you know, and just to be a strong force for them to hear them and to be able to bring about a positive change, a positive transformation, and hopefully change some of the experiences that's been had by some people up until this point.
Well, you know, Beaumont Independent School District, uh, has had a bad, um, reputation or just, uh, you know, it represents the city and has always had an issue, uh, gauging, uh, from the, from the people in the city has always downed top the Beaumont Independent School District. So what if I'm gonna ask you, what would you do to improve that relationship and improve the, the school board and the school district to be more acceptable?
I think that there are two key aspects, two key elements that I would look at. I would look at transparency and I would look at perspective.
Uh huh.
When I say transparency, I say that because I think that that is what's missing. There are so many parents who feel like they don't know what's going on. They don't know what's really happening in the schools. There, there's, you know, they only have pieces of the puzzle. And I feel like if we provided all of the pieces of the puzzle and told them the why to a lot of the questions that they have, that would bring about an aura of appreciation. When I say perspective, I'm gonna say it this way. I was a person, my daddy's from Lake Charles, my mom was right there from the South End off Levy Street, okay? My parents, my mom is a Grace, that's her maiden name, Grace is from South End, okay? And my dad would always say something, because he was from Lake Charles, he'd always say people had a Beaumont mentality, a Beaumont mentality, and I'm sure you've heard that.
Yes, yes. Yes, more than once, you know, more than once, yeah.
And so, me growing up hearing that so much, because my dad was a businessman in this city, and me hearing that so much, you know, made me really think about that in depth. What does that mean? And so I, I, I moved to Dallas, I had moved to Houston, and I moved to Georgia. Georgia was my last big move, and I even lived in Florida, you know what I'm saying? But my last big move was Georgia, and I ended up coming back home because my mom and dad need me, and so I have to be here. And that was in 2022. And when I went to Georgia, I saw one thing that was very resounding. When I went to Florida, I saw one thing that was very resounding, that these places have the same problems as Beaumont. Beaumont is maybe a lot smaller, it may not have been a lot smaller than, than Columbus, Georgia, you know, or some of the other places where I lived. But the thing about it was, when I came back here, I had to change my perspective. I could not keep talking down on a city that I have to live in.
Right.
That's a torturous, that's a torturous experience. And you sit here and you keep putting out this bad energy, saying you hate it, you hate that, you hate that. Sometimes it takes a different look, because I can say a lot of things about B I S D, but I know B I S D turned me out. You understand me? I came out of B I S D, and I came out of B I S D well, grabbing a hold of those great experiences with those teachers like Coach White, with those teachers like Mrs. Aplon, or Miss Noon, or Miss Bruce Star, or Miss Selly, or Mrs. Edwards, all those teachers who were my teachers who really made an impact in my life. There were some who did not make an impact, but you know what I just don't do? I don't talk about them, because I'm so satisfied with the good teachers and what they did. So I have to say perspective, because we have to be honest with ourselves and be real. It's not all bad. And if you are one of the good ones, and you're looking at it saying it's not all bad, and you wanna leave here, well, how is it ever gonna get better, better if everyone good leaves?
Wow, right, if everyone does leave, how can we? Yeah, and how can we can improve it if everyone leave?
I tried, it didn't work.
So what would you do, how, by governing the board of B I S D, how can you improve this image in the community?
Oh, my gosh, um, by not feeding into the negativity, number one. By not ignoring the negativity, I'm always a person, I've been, I've had to face very hard truths in my life. And it's always served me well, no matter how much it hurt me, you know what I'm saying?
Right, right.
So I think that on the board, I will be a advocate for accountability of the board and of the district.
Uh huh.
Right?
Right.
The accountability that, do you realize the accountability that we do have to the students and the parents and the educators? You know what I'm saying? I think there's also something that needs to be, they need to understand that, stop looking at it as us against them. It cannot be an us against them in a school district, that will never work. So we have to change the perspective to understand that we are all on the same team of wanting these children to succeed and wanting our educators to be happy and feel appreciated.
Uh huh.
You know, so I would start in-house first. I would start in-house to see who, you know, and of course, I can't say I'm gonna run through there. I'm not, I'm not gonna do that, because who am I?
Exactly, right.
Who am I at the end of the day? Because there's no, uh, big I's and little u's, that people need to understand also that the board runs as a team. Now, I don't have to agree with everything the team says, but there has to be respect for the team.
Exactly.
Honesty has never failed me. And I think if I put something on the minds of those people on the board, when these problems arise, I think that we should have more community, um, events, more involvement. If we have to, you know, make phone calls to the parents to bridge those gaps, because they are, there are gaps between the edu, the teachers, the educators, I'm sorry, the teachers, the parents, and the administrative office of the district, they are gaps. And those gaps need to be closed, and we need to come together and work together. And that's gonna be one of my main priorities, is to be unbiased.
Okay.
Okay, unbiased in any aspect, but very well, so no, I'm not joining some henchman club. I'm joining to be a real integral advocate for the children and the teachers, and I just wanna be clear on that. I, I wanna be very clear, I'm not joining the club, I'm not trying to be one of the good old girls, or one of the good old whatever. I'm joining as an advocate for teachers and.
You know, being on the board is really a job, and, and it, it, it takes a lot to, to, to be on the board. Takes a lot of your time, free time as it is. So let me ask this, uh, what, uh, if you, if you was elected, what, once the B I S, the Beaumont Independent School District School Board votes to approve an action or policy, what do you believe is your responsibility to that policy or action? Especially if it did not support that policy at action?
I think that it's my responsibility to, number one, be thorough with what's going on within the policy, to make sure that everything is understood, that all the, the Ts are crossed and the Do, the Is are dotted. But not only that, to look at it from every perspective, to see if I was sitting on this side, how would this policy affect me, or how the policy is gonna affect my own grandchildren?
Right.
That's what I appreciate about this race. I'm not coming from an educator's perspective, although, perspective, although I am a teacher of life through poetry and through wisdom. I'm coming as that regular smegular mama, that regular smegular grandmother, who's in the schools, who has been in the schools, who have seen things from the outside looking in. But now I'm gonna be, I'm, I'm going in the room, and I'm gonna know exactly all the big question marks. All these years, I'm gonna know the answers. And I feel like when it comes to those policies, the public needs to be well informed. I think there needs to be extra effort to make certain that these policies are well informed to the parents, because so often these things are passed, and it's almost like a ghost process, because no one knows what's happening. Am I right?
You're right.
It's almost ghostly. And so by the time the thing comes through and something happens with this child, and then the parents raising all this, whatever, you know what? Oh, well, this was passed four months ago. What? Why didn't we know about this? Oh, we sent an excerpt home. No, let's get some real coverage on what this means. Let's put it on the radio, let's call a town hall, let's call a forum, let's do something to where the people can know about this. Furthermore, let's call this forum, and then let's, let, let's, let's try to get the people out, see? And that's the issue too, we have to get the people to come out to even know about these things, so they'll know exactly what it means for their children.
Right, you're right, you're right. And that's, that's, you, you said a mouthful when you say getting the parents to come out.
Uh huh.
You know, the parents, they, they, you know, they, they, they bitch and raise hell about their children screwed, and what they're not doing, and what the school's not doing, and the school board's not doing, the teachers are doing this to their child, and this, that, that, that. But they would not come out to the board meeting.
They won't come to the board meeting, they won't come to this.
PTA, they don't come to anything, they don't come to anything, so why are you, why are you complaining? Why are you complaining?
Why are you complaining?
Right.
That's what, as I am a very active participant in my grandchildren's schooling, they go to Fletcher, and I'm gonna just say it. Fletcher is, Fletcher is right in the middle of the avenues, which is what we call it. What do we call it, Tony? Little Mexico, right?
Mexico City.
Mexico City. And the, most of those students there are Hispanic. When there was the STAR meeting, now the STAR meeting is very important, because you have the third graders, this is their first, my grandbabies in the third grade, first time taking it. I walk in, and it always is something, because they have, Fletcher always has the best door prizes. I'm talking about TVs, gift cards, I'm like, man, every time, man, somebody, I mean, so many Hispanics, so they take it, boy, they take the boatload home every time. But I'm sitting there, and I'm looking around, and I know cotton picking well is more than four black kids at this school.
Right.
But it's not but four parents at the meeting, three and one grandparent. You understand?
Right, I understand that.
And that's the problem. Let's be active, let these, let these children know that you are active with their education. It makes no sense, these kids can grab them phones at two and three and one years old.
That's right.
And literally sit there and watch, and know exactly what to do, but can't read a book.
That's right.
Can't, can't, any of, can't do any of that, can't write their name, their, and so that's a problem. I wanna have seminars to let the children, these parents know, hey, your mind has been conditioned. We had no cell phones when we were in school, we did not need them, we did not have to have them. Let's break the dependencies on these devices, because it's ruining your children.
Right, exactly.
Ruining your children. And, 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 and this can go so deep, but with, I don't know, the, the parents, they, we have to have more participation. And as that person, that real mama, that real grandmother, you know, with the excellent business background, with a very stellar personality, who has a heart for people, I wanna reach those parents. I wanna reach the mama on food stamps who lives in Regent, or Point North Apartments, or the Bricks, or Lincoln Terry's, or wherever. I wanna talk to those people, I wanna talk to the ones who, uh, work a whole lot, who, who, you work at the refinery, and you work eighteen thousand hours a week, but you don't have no time for your child.
Uh huh.
I wanna talk to them too.
Right.
I do. And I, I, I think that, I believe that everything, Bible says there is life and death in the power of the tongue. I have seen words move mountains. And I know that with the right things being said in the right arenas to the right people, we can make movement and we can make action, action, but it all starts with words. But so often, people dismiss words because people lie, can I just say it?
I would say it, you know, say it, I would say it.
Because people lie, and they make a lot of false promises. That's one thing I cannot do. The only promise that I have is I'm always gonna be myself. I'm gonna be integral, and I'm gonna be honest and transparent. And I'm gonna fight for the children and for the educators. That's the only promise I can make, and I'm gonna listen, period.
Hey, I'd like to welcome Amber Sustain, she's watching us on Instagram. You don't know, I notice when everybody's on this line. Hey, but listen, since we're talking about, uh, the STAR test, uh, let me ask this, uh, on the STAR test, the STAR test is a requirement, correct?
It is.
And all students have to pass this test in order to graduate from high school. What resources would you commit to, to assure our student's success?
The STAR test, we mean in the STAR test, period?
Yes.
The STAR test is something that really I'm very split on. I don't like standardized testing, I don't. I think it's not a fair assessment of children. I think that it's unfair to put everyone on this one, this one scale, and you measure them on this one scale. I don't think it's fair that a child has to go to school for so many years, and if they don't pass this standardized test, then they risk not graduating. I, I, I don't like it. However, I understand that it is a way of life, and it is something that, since I've been in school with the TARS test, it seems not to be going away anytime soon. Okay? What I would do to, what I would do to help the process be better is to give more teachers time up for the curriculum, so they don't have to be, feel like they're crammed. Um, I would also decrease, I would advocate for smaller learning sessions for the children, so the teachers could spend more time with less students.
Uh huh.
Right?
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, if you spend more time with less students, it's more to go around, you're able to zone in on what the trouble issues are. And then I think that so often, teachers don't have the time to be creative or critically think, because they have these deadlines that need to be met. But I say give teachers more freedom within the curriculum of STAR, and how to teach it, and how to be effective teaching those, those parts of that test, you know, especially the, and I think also that the state should see if there are any trends. Are there any trends that gives all students a hard time? Have we made this impossible? Is it not understood easily? Let's reevaluate the test, let's relook at the test. I also think there should be another way out when the student is unable to take the STAR. If the student has all, if there's a trends of this student, just, because you know, some children have test anxiety. My oldest daughter is that way, and it has, it has plagued her for years. And if a child has test anxiety, and there's this big buildup to this STAR test, and the closer and closer to get, this kid can't sleep, this kid has sweaty palms, this kid is making themselves sick over this test, then that's something that needs to be reported, and it's something that needs to be evaluated, and it needs to be recognized and a solution. You know, there needs to honestly be a solution, but I think there's no wiggle room with standardized test, testing. I'm, I'm not a fan of it, not at all. But I think that, um, smaller sessions would help the teachers be able to be more effective with teaching. I think an honest look at trouble spots, um, is this, is this, is this a trend? Have we run into this every year? You know, how, what's the rage of, what's the, what's the failing, what's the failure look like? You know, when I went to the board meeting the other day, they, we literally, they just got the scores for twenty-two and twenty-three. And you know what I said, what on earth is that gonna do for us now? So we're still waiting on twenty-three and twenty-four to be released. So when we're gonna get twenty-four and twenty-five, in twenty-twenty-eight?
And we're still in, and we're in twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five, year twen, twenty-twenty-five.
Yeah, and twenty-two and twenty-three just got released. So Tony, you tell me, how is that a, how can you assess this test properly?
You can't assess, you can't.
Exactly, exactly. It's not fair, it's not. And I hope someday, I don't know, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be very honest. There are some things I don't know, I'm, I'm so eager to learn, but I really hope that the opportunity presents itself to someday meet whoever represents us in education with the Senate, um, to be able to voice some of these things to Congress, maybe even the governor, so he can understand the perspective of the people on this level. Because I think that that's what's the problem, they are so out of touch with the real people. They've been at so many galas, and so many this, and so many that, that you're out of touch with the real people. And the real people need an advocate, someone to put these things in their face, and put it in their face honestly, and package it in a way where it's digested and understood.
I absolutely agree.
Yes.
I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Uh, schools are valuable community services, resources, they're, they're valuable, valuable community resources. That is going to be, that's a, that's growing movement and to have schools to become neighborhood resource centers. I'm not gonna ask that question again. That is a growing movement to have schools to become neighborhood resource centers, open to the community early in the morning and later in the evening for variety, varieties of use. Now, are you aware of this concept, or would you support it?
I actually would support it, I'm not aware of this concept, but I would support it, because there are so many resources. If it's gonna be open though, I think that I would like to see there be, um, because some of these children, in all honesty, the last meal of the day is lunch at school.
That's right.
And if they could have something where we could have a, um, a, a brown bag special in these resource centers, so the children who come into safe spaces, we have to make sure we have security, because we know things, strange things can happen, right?
Right.
So we have to make sure we have security, but I would love to see that implemented, um, within B I S D, if these resource centers were to come, were, if this was to come to fruition, food for them to have at night, homework help, you know, someone who's there who can be trusted, um, you know, just a place of safety. That is what's all encompassed in rebuilding the village. The village was safe.
Uh huh, right.
The village was safe, back in the day when we were coming up, you know, you had Ms. Maybell down the street, Ms. Maddie at the corner, Ms. Pearl, you know what I'm saying? And they all had the babies, everybody had the babies, some of them was mean, and some was sweet as pie, but they always gonna take care of your behind, and they was gonna whip your tail if need be too.
That's right.
You know what I'm saying?
That's no, that's no more neighbors like that anymore, sorry to say.
No more neighbors like that anymore. So we have to find those ra, we have to find those diamonds in the rough and come together, and bind together, and rebuild the village. And just as, just, okay, you know, just example, the whole thing that happened Friday night at the boxing thing we had out here, right?
Yeah.
It was guns down, hands up. Well, first of all, why would you call it guns down, hands up, if we're saying stop the violence, what you wanna fight for anyway? But it was nothing but an open invitation to come and put your guns down, and let's duke it out. It was the energy that went towards that whole thing, which caused all those people to fight. That negative energy is infectious, I said that to say this, so it's positive energy.
Right.
And if we pull those people who are like myself, like you, and we pull those people together, guess what? It's gonna catch on, and others are going to wanna come aboard, and others are want, going to want to be an integral part of something great for our community and helping our children.
Yes.
I, I certainly wouldn't mind having a couple of shifts at the resource center and making some red beans and sausage and wringing a good old.
You said a mouthful, you said a mouthful, girl. Let me get a big shout out, let me get a big shout out to everyone that's watching this and listening to us on LinkedIn. You know, we're with LinkedIn and, and YouTube, I wanna say hello, everybody. Let me switch over here to Instagram and see you all on that set. Oh, okay, we've got sport, we got Stacy Riley, and Isaiah Prudeman is, is watching it also, Sandy Mike, hello, guys. Thank you for watching, this, this interesting conversation we're having with Triva Johnson, who is running for Beaumont Independent. Johnson, who is running for Beaumont Independent School District School Board Trustee, District Number Three. District Number Three. Uh, and it's been very interesting and talking with you, uh, Treva, you have been. And also let me go here to, back to Facebook and say hello to Philip Gibbs and and to, and, uh, Ms. Carmea, you still go by Carmea, who can you is? And Doris Bishop, hello cousin. Uh, but here's a, here's something that, that we, you're gonna run into as a school board member. Um, as a parents, uh, they will pull their children out of a class that has an incompetent teacher. However, as a school board member, you are responsible for all children. So how will you assure that teacher, are those teachers are properly evaluated and held accountable?
Oh, I think that's huge. So how can I say this without saying, there was a situation. I've seen, I'm gonna say this, I've seen situations where teachers have been wrong. And I think that part of the issue with the teachers that have been wrong is Beaumont I S D has been so concerned with saving face. And they've done it so much to the e- extent of covering up for the person who caused trouble in the first place.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't believe in, I believe if you do something and you're wrong against the child, you, you need to go. You need to be reprimanded and you need to go. And in some cases, there needs to be some talk on legal ramifications.
Right.
You know, and I mean, real talk on legal ramifications. I do not believe in covering, uh, slime. I, I, being, uh, I've gone through many things as a child. I've seen the after effects of things happening to people as, that happened to them as children. And I can tell you that abuse and neglect are some heavy bags to carry. And I know that me being me could not lay down at night knowing I covered up some, for somebody just because they work within a district and let a child be hurt, ridiculed, basically told they were a liar and, 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 and their parents to be devastated by whatever the situation may be. I think that there needs to be thorough investigation and unbiased investigation. And I think that bias is one of the things that infuriate the parents and the public. Because it's almost like, don't touch us, almost like the, the untouchables, you know? And you're touchable. You're very touchable. You're very touchable and you can't go around, you know, hurting people's children or having your own sick agenda in whatever the format may be. You cannot do that. It is unethical, is not right, and often cases it's against the law. You know, there's a lot of stuff that goes on with these children. There's a lot of, I'm gonna say it, excuse me, Tony. There's a lot of, um, lot of grooming that goes on within the district, a lot. Um, a lot of different situations that really should be nipped in the bud and a lot of people know about and it's hidden and it's shush, shush. Because if this comes out, well, it needs to come out because people need to know what's going on. Because the, what makes people pull their children is a lack of trust. If I can't trust that my child is gonna be okay here eight hours a day without somebody trying to hit on them or hit on them or whatever that happens or discriminate against them or treat them differently because they look a certain way, then how can I keep my child, how can I call myself a good parent if the school district they're in can't protect the children? That's the problem.
Wow. That's, that's wow. Hey, listen, Treva, it's been great talking to you about that. You really, uh, feeding the brains here. And I hope that we've got those that get a chance to watch it later on. I just made those who're watching it now live. Thank you guys for, for listening and watching and giving us your time. But I, um, Treva is running for school board, Beaumont Independent School Board District Trustee, District Three. And, uh, she needs your support and you want changes? I think she's fed, fed you enough to guess, give us those changes. So now Treva, I'm gonna go back to this question here and let me ask you this. Uh, what do you have, eh, do you have any specific changes you want to see made in the school, uh, in our schools curriculum?
Oh, I would like there, I would like there to be a huge focus place. This, okay, this is what I have to say. I think we have to appreciate and understand the fact that not every child is going to go to college. I think that there should be more attention put on these children being able to take care of themselves after high school. Once eighteen hits, nineteen hits, I would like to see something teaching them the, the, the heaviness of credit and what that really is and how it impacts your life. And teaching them the ins and outs of credit cards. I think that we should do something to teach senior girls for sure. And now these days, senior boys, what does sexual assault look like? Because they going into this world, basically more real life curriculum. Something that's going to prepare them after they leave school.
Yes, yes.
That's what I, cause we have too many children who graduate not knowing anything and that's a problem.
You, 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 you brought up two good points. Uh, uh, that's, that they may need to learn that and they also need to learn how to, once they leave school, how to manage a check with well credit card, a debit card or how to balance it. Uh, what, how to create credit, how to, uh, uh, get and start a life, your lifeline going now. You know, and that, we don't have anything to prepare these children once they cross that stage.
We don't. Even with the voting. Do you know the demographic between eighteen and thirty-five that if, if all those went out, they would blow up the polls?
That's right.
They would blow up the polls.
Absolutely. No, you're right. You know, we complain so much about what we don't have and what we, we complain about what they're doing to us and how they doing to us. Instead of getting out, teaching your young ones and teach, well, a lot of them need to be taught themselves to go vote.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
This is the issue we have today. You're looking, we, you know, things are getting taken away from us because we don't do what? Vote.
Don't vote, don't vote. And people don't understand the real power is on the local level. That's the real power.
That's the real power.
Local level. You know what I'm saying?
Real power, yes.
That's your representation right there.
Absolutely.
And I think if we started in school, teaching them primarily about voting and have something in place, if you turn in eighteen, by the time you walk across that stage, we're gonna make you educated where you're gonna already have your voter registration card when you walk. There's, we not gonna tell you what to choose, but at least put yourself in a position where you can make the choice. Right?
Right. Hey, thank you Sabrina, uh, for watching and listening and we, we appreciate you because we're talking some good talk here tonight. And Sabrina saying that, uh, she's a volunteer. She helped as a, as a parent environment in B I S D. Uh, and she's an approved volunteer. And have her own business as well to promote all items discussed. Hey, we appreciate you. That is wonderful. I, I appreciate that because we all need that help. We all need that. Yes, we do. And she also said, I have sample ballots and the information it took, is provided for any and all students on every level. Now that's kids right now in school that is eighteen years old now.
Yes.
That can vote.
They can vote.
They can vote right now as a senior high school. They can vote. It all starts, we gotta understand, it all started at the local level.
It starts at the local level. That's the most, our, our power is exercise.
That's the curriculum, that's the curriculum that I would love to see in school where kids are learning how to with, with they're gonna face life.
Yes, life.
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 This is why you have my hair shooting up each other, killing, uh, teenagers, shooting up, killing people on a bicycle in the neighborhood down the street. Uh, it, it's just so, because they does, they, 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 they don't have a foundation. There's no foundation at all.
No foundation. They don't know how to talk to people. They don't know how to make important phone calls. They don't know the language to use when you're on the phone. It's a certain way to do things. It's not what you do, but it's how you do it.
Right.
You know, they need to learn all of these things because if not, let me tell you something. I'm forty-seven, about to be forty-eight years old. After a while, it's gonna be in their hands.
Right. See. That's right, we, 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 we're those senior citizens. Well, I can say I'm one of those senior citizens now. But it, 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 it takes, they got to learn how to start respecting themselves. How they gonna respect anybody else if they don't respect themselves? And we don't, you know, it's not there. It's not there. Let's go back and I'm gonna let you read what Sabrina said here. She's a, a, a B I, a B I S D substitute teacher and she implement life skills in each class age appropriate. Uh, that's, that is great to have. That is great to have. Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
People like Sabrina. I know several teachers and, and I'm, it's, when I see it, it breaks my heart because so, I, I know there are more teachers who care than teachers who don't. Right?
Right.
And when I see the teachers who care and they do what Sabrina's doing, they, they, they have this way of just, you know, kinda including those things that the kids have to catch.
Mm-hmm.
They have to catch it, but it, it has to kind, it has to be subtle. It can't be brazen and bold because why? Because life lessons are not in the curriculum. You have to have a teacher who cares who's gonna do something like that. Right? And so that's the most heartbreaking part to me is the teacher's hands are tied to where they can only go so far. But the teacher's hands are tied, but, but these kids going home and seeing stuff most grown folks don't even do every day.
You're right. You're, you're right.
New Jack City at home and, and they getting blues cool at school.
I, I, I can laugh right quick. I, I, I took him, I, I took some kids to the basketball game one night.
Yes.
And it was a playoff game and I can't think of the playoff game. And one was, one kid was nine, one kid was six and the other one was seven, I guess. But the kids at six and seven knew just as much as I knew and I'm trying, I'm looking at someone, I know that, but it was I mean, they did act like they've been on the streets since they were seventeen years old.
You hear? Wow.
And it scared me. I thought maybe they were gonna take my car or whatever. But let me ask you one more questions and we're gonna, I'd like to ask you one more question and, uh, and this, it is, uh, what is, what is it that, what views do you have at the school board and admini- administration relationship as they relate to management of the school district operation? In other words, I'm saying, how can the board members and the administration work together to make a better environment? Uh, and management, managing to relate to the management of the schools? Schools need to be managed much better, I think.
See, to me, it's simple. It's, it goes back to the team. It goes back to the fact that we're all on the same team, whatever. Think about it this way, you, you know how complex a train is.
Right.
Now, we look at a train and you don't understand how complex a train is until you try to put together one of those little train sets, right? Because it's pieces every, but then a real train, you've got this moving, that moving, this honking and this and that. If you had a train and every piece of the train wanted to go different directions, the train wouldn't move nowhere altogether.
That's right.
And that's the problem with the school. The train is not on one accord. And that's why the train is not moving or is, is barely chugging along because it's, it's different agendas. It's so split, it's so separate. But we are all a team. And so that's what I would bring to incorporate the perspective of teamwork, the reality of teamwork and, and, and really be a big cheerleader for that and keep putting reminders, hey, we're not fighting against them. We're all on one team. We're all on team kids. So let's look at what's best for the children. What's best, what's going to serve the children best? What's gonna serve the teachers best? Let's find a happy medium. And let's not be angry with each other and be enemies with each other. This is work. At the end of, and I think that's why the, and it, it ties in so deep because when you look at teachers, most of the teachers I know get off of work and go home to work. How is that right? How is it that there's no work-life balance? How is it that a teacher can't get off of school, get away from work and be done with work? Because if it were me and my job, we would have a serious problem. Somebody getting sued because I'm not supposed to be working. You know what I'm saying?
Yes.
So how is that fair for teachers? How are teachers left out of the equation of this work-life balance? How is there no cushion for teachers to be able to not be so stressed down, bogged down with work? How is it that the administration and, 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 and every other office can't come together for the common good of one primary focus, the children? And that is what I will keep repeatedly saying until it's understood and said in any way that I can. I don't do drama. I don't do dissension in the workplace. I don't care wherever I've been. If you have a problem with me, let's discuss it. We can talk about it and I'll let you know how I feel and you let me know how you feel. And at the end of the day, we're gonna respect each other and we still gonna come to a happy medium. Period. Because I'm not gonna go against what's best for the children, what's best for the educators to go along with the status quo. Because the status quo has failed us. The status quo has us with some glimpses on B I S D that some people don't wanna, don't think can be removed. I happen to think it can be removed. I believe it can be removed. There are great teachers within this district and I think that we need to spend so much time highlighting that. And when the negative comes, acknowledge the negative. Let's work out a game plan to attack the negative and let's get it fixed. Period.
Early voting starts tomorrow, April twenty-second. Let's get out and vote.
Yes.
Get out and vote. Early voting starts tomorrow at your voting polls, April twenty-second. Now, thank you so much, Treva, for joining us, uh, this evening and I hope you the best of all.
Thanks.
In your endurance, in your journey to become Beaumont Independent School Board District, uh, trustee, District Number Three representative. And people, we always here on Sundays at seven P M, uh, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. We have our guests every Sunday. We happen to be here on a Monday tonight because of Easter and yesterday and the treatment was, was gonna be too full of eggs, so we couldn't have it there. But I really appreciate you, Treva, for jumping in and, and helping out. I wanna thank Sabrina and, 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 and her comments. And she said that I am in with you, Treva Johnson. And thank you so much, Treva, I mean Sabrina. Thank you so much to everybody on YouTube and LinkedIn and Facebooks and those on Instagram. And I appreciate you guys watching us. Uh, and John is on, John is on Sundays at seven P M. Also, on Tuesday at nine o'clock, uh, there's a, a special, uh, podcast with, uh, um, Chris Jones, uh, the Round Table Talker. It's only every Tuesday at the, uh, nine o'clock, uh, right here on this, 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 uh, uh, platform, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. So again, I'd like to thank again Treva, his boy Johnson for joining us and giving us her vision, her agenda and what she, uh, the changes that she's gonna wanna make, it's just gonna, it's unbelievable. I like that. I love what I heard tonight. And, and I wish you the best, love. Is there anything you wanna say before we close?
I just wanna say thank you for having me. I'm so very excited for everything. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm very thankful and grateful. I represent God. I do. Not religious. I believe in relationship. And the relationship that I have with Most High, um, keeps me integral and, and focusing on integrity and results. So, um, God blesses me to have this seat. If I'm supposed to sit in that seat, guess what's gonna happen? I'm gonna sit in that seat.
Sit in that seat.
I'm gonna bring him honor as I do it.
Speak it in existence. Speak it.
Amen, amen, amen.
Thank you, everyone. We love you. See you on Sunday, seven P M, Knowledge is Power Podcast Live. And I'm Tony Redford. And I'm Tony Redford, your host.